Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the December 4th Board of Supervisors regular meeting. We did not have a closed session. Mr. Frazier, I am wondering, even though public comment is later in the evening, if you have some folks here that are specifically here to speak to you, if we should go first with that agenda item only specific to you and then move on?
That's all right.
Oh, I bet you do.
There's a lot of good people here tonight.
There are. What would you prefer?
Maybe you could move public comment up if that's the way the problem is. You don't advertise public hearings.
Yes, sir.
Can I put forward a motion to just amend the agenda to move public comment first in our 7:00 PM session?
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And so just to be clear, that would just be simply moving, well, gosh.
And one.
And one. Oh, we have to go all the way down there? Okay. Yeah, definitely.
And I would ask maybe that we move the amended budget public hearing to the end of the public hearings?
I agree.
And then take the Sheffield ADU number one and public hearings. All day tourist home number two and the amended budget number three.
Friendly amendment that I'll incorporate in my motion.
Okay.
Just, if I could just make sure I'm caught up. So, public comment, Sheffield ADU, all day tourist home, then?
Yes, sir. Amended budget.
Then amended budget.
Got it?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Given that, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into public comment first. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up to the mic and give us your name and the district you're in, and we'll keep public comment to five minutes or less.
And to be clear, this is not on the three public hearings that are advertised, the budget, Sheffield ADU, and the all-day tourist home, but it is on any other subject.
Yes, sir.
Tom Junk from Piedmont District. I guess I'll do, I'll go first, simply because, you know, they close the roads at Rappahannock down after a certain period of time here. And we all need, you know, be home by that time. So, my pleasure, this is coming on my 40th year out here. There's been three exceptional supervisors in my 40 years out here. First of all, they always put Rappahannock first. Second, they always did their homework, whatever it was. My good friend Pete Estes is one of them. Bob Anderson is another. And my friend, Mr. Frazier, is the third. And his service to this county is beyond exemplification. He has always put this county first, beyond his own needs, as the rest of the two supervisors I've mentioned. If the current supervisors take any bit from Mr. Frazier, or Mr. Estes, or Mr. Anderson, please say that they always put Rappahannock first. And I want to say, Ron Frazier, God bless you, and many more years, and this county will miss his being on the board. And thank you very much, Ron. God bless. And before they close up the roads, I'm going to go home. And anyway.
Thank you.
Bye, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Who would like to speak next?
Yes, sir.
Finally learned how to do that. Paige Glennie, Jackson District. I want to thank Mr. Frazier for his many years of dedicated service to the county. He truly cares for the county and its citizens. He contributed countless hours, countless hours, and made many personal sacrifices for the citizens of Jackson District. Mr. Frazier is a rare politician. His integrity and willingness to speak up for what is right demonstrated how he always put the citizens he represented first. He thoroughly believes in and practices the principles of the Constitution. He embodies public service as the founding fathers envisioned. If it's anything stopping them from doing backflips in their grave right now, it's you. Mr. Frazier made many significant contributions to the county. He spoke out against unnecessary spending and projects. He asked the hard questions that many would not. He applied his knowledge and common sense to each issue before the board. Mr. Frazier did his homework. He read the documents presented. He thoroughly researched issues. He stayed abreast of events throughout the state, and he sought out advice from those with experience. Mr. Frazier is a wealth of county history and knowledge. His connections within the community and his memories always revealed the story behind the story. He knows so many of the citizens, their families, and their relationships to one another. He knows the good and the bad. Mr. Frazier is an open book. He tells you what he thinks, often with as much vinegar as sugar. He actively participates on social media, initiating public debates. He truly wants to know what the citizens think. Mr. Frazier is always entertaining with his many stories, his one-liners, his dry wit, and his self-deprecating humor. He would often get the room to giggle sometime during a meeting, and that's a challenge for you tonight. Mr. Frazier is truly country. He may very well be the last farmer to serve on the board. He embodies the country culture we also cherish. He will be deeply missed. Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much.
And if you would, I'd like to whole thing to you.
Thank you. Who'd like to speak next? Anyone wishing to speak?
Well, I'm short, so I'll move it down.
Oops, I'll move it.
My name is Karen Hunt. I live in Amosville in Jackson District, and I was going to speak on the zoning ordinance revision. It's a massive undertaking at the joint planning commission and Board of Supervisors hearing on November the 15th. Mr. Curry acknowledged it's a very large project. At that same meeting, it was recognized that we need to take the time necessary and not rush it. I'm not sure what timeframe is being suggested in the agenda details when Mr. Curry says the staff redline comments are, quote, "an interim step before the ordinance amendment document is declared to be ready for formal public hearing." I'm not sure any of us have a clear enough understanding of the entirety of this project to feel it's anywhere close to ready for a public hearing and possible decision. Our zoning ordinance is one of the most important governing tools that we have. We're supposed to be improving it. The size and scope of what's being proposed is really too much at one time. Certainly, the public, but I would also suggest the planning commission, the Board of Supervisors, and staff need to break this into manageable portions to be able to carefully, thoroughly, and thoughtfully review all of it. We need to consider one section at a time so that we can clearly digest it all. There's four, and Article Three is huge. It's critically important that we fully understand the impacts of every single change being proposed. Currently, we've commingled state code changes with procedural changes with substantive changes that may or may not be required or needed. We don't want unintended consequences that come back to bite us because we missed something important in trying to digest too much all at once. I feel everyone, especially the public, would be much better served by being able to clearly see why each change is being made, and more importantly, why? Is it to conform to current code? Is it a procedural change that staff is advocating? Is it something the Board of Supervisors has directed staff to make? Is there a source document of some type that supports each change and is guiding this process that the public, the planning commission, and the Board of Supervisors can reference here? Because please correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, that hasn't been done, or if it has, it hasn't been shared with the public. We cannot go forward without clearly understanding what the impact of all that will be. So, I urge you to consider the need to reevaluate how this should be approached so all of us can properly discern the what and the why of what is basically a complete rewrite of our zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District. And I'm here to speak, well, good evening to everyone, staff, and all Board members. Mr. Frazier, I would like to thank you for your, I think it was 28 years of dedicated service.
Three more weeks, it will be, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And I would like to thank you for that. I found you to be an honest person. I found you to have common sense, which a lot of people have little to none. I found you to be conservative. You are not a politician. You do not qualify as a politician because you do not speak out of both sides of your mouth. You are straightforward. You let us have it just like it is. And also, I thank you for your faith in God because I truly believe that a lot of your decisions are made based upon your faith. Now, you were not born in Rappahannock, I don't think.
I was born in a hospital.
But that hospital was not in Rappahannock.
Oh, sorry. Warren County.
And when they brought you home, it was not in Rappahannock?
It's all here.
Correct. Okay. We're on the same page. So, you're not a true native of Rappahannock?
My daddy was born in Old House.
Okay. All right. Okay. But I found you to be not like the most of our friends and neighbors that have come here from the north and from the east. That being that I think when your father and mother brought you here, they didn't have a lot of wealth. They didn't have a lot of money in their pocket. They didn't spend enormous money to buy property and land in Rappahannock County. So therefore, they did not start off contributing a problem for us natives in Rappahannock County. Those people, from day one, have caused a problem for us in Rappahannock County. First off, they came here with a lot of wealth, and they're still coming. We haven't put up the wall yet to stop it. Maybe that's coming, I don't know. But, so you didn't do that. Your family didn't do that. So, you didn't create, they didn't create a problem for our taxes, for our schools. They didn't create a problem for us landowners and propertyowners. They didn't cause an increase in our taxes, even though every revalidation from thereforth, our property tax did go up. You may have held the tax rate down, but the ones of us that had land and property, we still had to pay more taxes. So I thank you for that. And with that, I think I would like to make a recommendation that we would award you as a native member of the Rappahannock County. Just a couple more things about common sense. I made a comment earlier about common sense. A lot of people do not have much common sense. Some have none. I have found you to have a lot of common sense. And right now, today, our county is facing a lot of issues that have been created by people making decisions with no common sense. I'm going to give you a couple of them. The so-called dog kennel, or whatever it is out at the junction of 211 and Old Hollow Road, it sure knows doesn't look like a dog kennel. It looks like anything but a dog kennel. It's two trailers out all the time. I don't know if it's a dog and pony show, if it's a trailer park, or what it is. And also, every Sunday morning, when I go turn up Old Hollow Road, I go to church every Sunday morning up to Old Hollow. I see the pallbearers in the skies, better known as vultures or buzzards swarming around that place. When the pallbearers are in the sky, something's not living. So something is not living there. And the decision to allow that so-called dog kennel to be out there was made by people of a board that has no common sense. But one common sense rule is, two wrongs never make a right. And their decision was based upon, they'll suppose it was two wrongs that had been made that didn't have to get a permit. So, I know this board didn't approve that, but I would behoove this board to follow up and try to take some kind of action to pursue, to correct that problem out there. It is an eyesore going into the village of Little Spurville, which is supposed to be the gateway to our great Channel National Park, which draws a lot of tourists. I don't think, that is not a tourist would enjoy seeing that mess on 211. That's the biggest, I've lived here for 77 years. I've lived in Spurville most of my life. I've never seen an eyesore like that on 211. So something needs to be done with that. Okay? Another thing, I guess, I'll just make one more comment. People with no common sense, a little common sense. We have a great problem now with the courthouse. Now, my thought, and it's just my opinion, if the judicial system, if the judges would use a little bit more common sense in administering to the criminals and so forth that come in there, we would not have the returns that we continue to have up there. You would have no need for two courtrooms because if they handed down the proper decision, you wouldn't be coming back in there every six months for the same thing. So, you may want to talk to our judges, and they could do a lot better job. We definitely need some improvement to our courthouse. And I'm not saying if we don't need another courthouse either, but we definitely need security and safety there in this building right here. We definitely need that, but...
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just want to remind you of first impressions and to share with you my first...
Name and district, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's John Hettleston. I'm in the Hawthorne, Stonewall Hawthorne District. When we came here 40 years ago, I think it's Hawthorne now, I'm not sure, but I do vote. When I first came here, as the editor of the Rappahannock News 40 years ago, I met Mr. Frazier long before he was ever a candidate for supervisor.
And here, you can testify to that.
Yeah. And I want to give you just a feel for what that first impression looked like. As the editor, I'd go up to the clerk's office, and Mr. Frazier would be there. Of course, he was 40 years younger, and he was always in a very clean, thank you, Kathy, white T-shirt. And the guy had muscles, he had bulk, and I thought, this is a man I don't want to mess with. He had his sleeves rolled up, and he had everything but a pack of Marlboros in one of them. But he was always doing his homework, and he was doing his homework as a citizen at that time, not one of our elected officials as well. But I knew, as an editor, and what I saw of Ron early on has always been sustained, that he did his homework, and he absolutely positively loves Rappahannock County. Whether he was born here or not, it is his home, and he's made it, I think, in many ways, a better home for all of us. So, Ron, thank you so much. God bless you, sir.
Good evening. Robert Yow from the Piedmont District. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Frazier for all his years of service to our county. While I'm not a resident of your district, I have come to know you for quite a few years. We share similar interests in history, this county, the Constitution, and many other things, but most importantly, and I shall say it, the war between the states, 1861 to 65. Mr. Frazier has been a great asset to this county for as long as I have known him. He truly has represented a citizen of his district, as well as the rest of the county. He has done his due diligence in just about every manner that I am aware of. While I can't say I may have supported him in every situation, I would venture to say there's very few things that I would disagree with in how you voted on all these years. Mr. Frazier's characteristics are quite irregular in this day and age. He has stood strongly on his beliefs of history, the U.S. Constitution, and more importantly, what is right for his district, for this county. He's not afraid to ask the questions that most are afraid to do, and he's more than willing to speak out when needed. And there's very, very few people that, in my opinion, that can do this these days. Mr. Frazier's departure is going to leave some pretty huge shoes to fill. It is my hope that his replacement and all members of the BOS will look positively on his many years of experience, and hopefully will gain some good knowledge on how to navigate our current and future major projects, from broadband to courthouse to many other important county improvements. One thing, if people didn't know me, I'm a big fan of history, big fan of Confederate history, and I have these pens, and I would be so bold to be politically incorrect, and wear a Confederate battle flag pen, a First National, and I'll wear it on several occasions, mostly related to history, such as General Robert E. Lee's birthday. Well, today, they're in your honor. I am happy to wear them, and I will miss you. Lastly, I will close with this fun fact. Mr. Frazier has represented his district for 28 years. In just a couple of weeks, I will be turning 29. So, in other words, Mr. Frazier has been a BOS member for my entire life, and not seeing you at the BOS meetings will be quite an adjustment. It seems the times are changing, and I'll leave with this question. Will it be for the better? That remains to be seen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Hi. Stephanie Kohl, Jackson District, K-O-H-L, last name. Ron, I'd be remiss if I didn't come up here and thank you publicly for everything you've done for us. I want to echo many of the statements that everyone else who's talked to you and come up here has said. I thank you so much for the hard work that you put into this job. I thank you so much for your dedication, for doing the homework, and for being my voice when I can't be here. I thank you for taking my phone calls and answering the questions, and like this gentleman said, giving it to me straight. And just for everything you've had to endure for asking questions that we need you to ask, even when some other people don't want you to ask them. You've done a great job, and I thank you so much for it.
J.B. Carter, Jackson District, Chief of Amosville Fire and Rescue. Ron, thank you very much for your many years of service to the county, for your support of the Jackson District, for Rappahannock County, the fire and rescue system as a whole. You stood fast, especially when it came to our fire services agreement, helped work that out, the veteran of the fire and rescue service in Rappahannock County. The building committee, I know you've done a lot of work there. Hopefully, some of the common sense things that you came forward with with the building committee will continue on even when you're gone. Your service on the fire levy board as well, to help not only move that body forward but make it better, was just some of the things that you've done for the fire and rescue service. Again, we're out there in Jackson District on the eastern front, so we're trying to guard the county from the influx of the horde that's coming. And again, Ron was never leery about asking questions. If he didn't know the answer, he would come and try to find the correct answers from the people who are actually doing the work. Again, 28 years, wish it was more, again, but since you've got all this time on your hands now, we're going to present you with some uniforms here, and hopefully you'll use them. Again, there's an application online if you want to. And again, thank you very much for all your service to the county and to the fire and rescue service of Rappahannock County.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Terry Dixon with the Stonewall Hawthorne District. Mr. Frazier, I want to thank you for your 28 years of service. One of my hobbies is I'm a chairman, I'm the chairman of the Rappahannock Republican Committee, and people often come up to me and say, we really need term limits, you know, in Congress and all that. I said, yes, but there's Ron Frazier. And I said, yeah, that's right. So, I want to thank you for doing the job that you've done for all these years. And as a former candidate for the Board of Supervisors, fortunately, I lost because people say, gee, I'm so sorry you lost, Terry. I said, that's okay. It could have been worse. I could have won, then I'd be sitting up there. And I know full well it is not an easy job. In fact, probably 95% of it's really not that pleasant. And, you know, Ron, you have done it over and over, and we just truly appreciate your conservative values, the way you do things, your presence on that board, and what you've done for this county. So I just thank you to the bottom of my heart for what you've done in your service and taking that time out of your life to serve the county of Rappahannock. Thank you.
Daniel Coffey, Piedmont District. I just want to say thank you, Ron, for your 28 years of service to the county and to all the citizens. It's greatly appreciated, and the next chapter, I wish you all the best, and God bless. Take care.
Thank you.
Carolyn Lutler, this is very hard for me because I have just grown to love Kathy and Ron, and I think they're some of the greatest people in the whole county. And Ron, not only have you represented Jackson District, I feel that you've represented me and the whole county because you always ask the questions, and very few people do. But that's what I feel that you're best at, is getting to the bottom and figuring out the problem. So, Ron, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and all that you've done. And Tom Junk said he'd been here for 40 years. I've been here for 290 years, so my words count.
David Conick from Stonewall District. Well, Ron, there's so many things that I could say and so many things that I could share over the years that you've been supervisor and that I've been involved in public affairs. And one thing nobody's mentioned is your service on the planning commission. I want to say thank you for that, because I don't even know how many years you were on there, I think 12 or 15.
I did that for the money. I did that one for the money.
Oh, for the money, yeah, right. Me too. And the other person that hasn't much been said about it, and that's your lovely wife, Kathy. Where is she at? There you are. I want to thank her too, because she had to put up with a lot of stuff, the same as you, but she didn't get to say much at the meetings.
She did a lot of work, too. She didn't get paid.
Right. So, I thought I would do something a little different and read something in addition to those comments. And it's from a great American president from a speech called "Citizenship in a Republic." And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to read a part of it. "Let the man of learning, the man of lettered leisure beware of that queer and cheap temptation to pose to himself and to others as a cynic, as the man who has outgrown emotions and beliefs, the man to whom good and evil are as one. The poorest way to face life is to face it with a sneer. There are many men who feel a kind of twisted pride in cynicism. There are many who confine themselves to criticism of the way others do what they themselves dare not even attempt. There is no more unhealthy being, no man less worthy of respect than he who either really holds or feigns to hold an attitude of sneering disbelief toward all that is great and lofty, whether in achievement or in that noble effort which even if it fails comes second to achievement. A cynical habit of thought and speech, a readiness to criticize work which the critic himself never tries to perform, an intellectual aloofness which will not accept contact with life's realities, all these are marks, not as the possessor would faint to think of superiority, but of weakness. They mark the man unfit to bear their part painfully in the stern strife of living, who seek in the affectation of contempt for the achievement of others to hide from others and from themselves their own weaknesses. The role is easy; there is none easier, save only the role of the man who sneers alike at both criticism and performance. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold, timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Theodore Roosevelt said that, April 23, 1910. And, Ron, those words apply to you, because you have striven greatly, you have not always been successful, not everybody has always agreed with you, and you've really been through it in 28 years. And I would say, besides you and me, and as I look around the room, I don't think there's anybody that's been to more meetings in this room than you and me. And I think we've been to more meetings together than most everybody else in the room put together, through a whole different bunch of boards of supervisors, planning commissioners, and so forth. And so, I know this is somewhat of a melancholy moment and a night, but you should be happy and celebrate, because there's very, very, very few people who can say they did what you did for as long as you did it and that did as good a job as you did at it. So, thank you very much, and I agree with all the wonderful things that everybody said. Thank you from all the citizens from the bottom of our hearts.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
John Capielli, Hampton District. This is like the Rolling Stones tour that the AARP is putting on right now. It's great.
I ain't that old.
And to hear you, I mean, I don't disagree with Mr. Conick, even though he's suing you in two different cases. I'm only suing you in one. I mean, that's terrific. We need your institutional knowledge. See, like out in front of the bank right now, where there's a line of junk cars, you know who they belong to. We need her and him to clean them up. You're looking at something that comes into the county where you're saying that it's going to hurt our tourism, and it's a blight. Those cars have been out there for years. Well, now that they're not protected any longer, because the person that owns them was just standing here a few minutes back, are you going to clean them up? It's yours. Now that you're aware of it, she's officially aware of it, he's officially aware of it, you have 30 days to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, did you say it's a lot of fun? Did you say that it's always a lot of fun? I think I heard you say.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I think it's all of Ron's pants ample opportunity before we get down into the fun things. I'm Sally Haynes with Piedmont District, and I'm concerned with the last item on tonight's agenda regarding the elimination of the 50-foot right-of-way requirement for certain subdivisions. I believe there's been a misinterpretation of this requirement and its usefulness, and this misinterpretation has been applied to a property next door to me, the Mount Airy subdivision. As a result, I asked the board for five things tonight, that you neither revise the two ordinances as proposed by staff, nor eliminate the right-of-way requirements for subdivisions, that you take action to reverse the zoning administrator's finding that the right-of-way requirement is unreasonable, unenforceable, and negates other ordinances. I don't believe our ordinance intends to give any one person the power to nullify an ordinance or for an ordinance to be changed or eliminated without public participation. I ask that you suspend the zoning administrator's consent for the Mount Airy subdivision to go forward and direct county staff to enforce the county ordinances until they're either changed by the Board of Supervisors or declared invalid by a court of law, that you provide citizens, including myself, access to communications and information regarding requests and the county's responses regarding the Mount Airy subdivision, and that you give citizens the full opportunity to provide input into deliberations about any and all proposals to revise, eliminate, or fail to enforce ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Tac Tac Alaski, Piedmont District, Thornton Gap Church Road. I want to echo Sally's comments, my concern of repealing an ordinance designed to protect their secondary roads without having a period of public comment and an opportunity to, if there's genuinely a problem, I don't think repealing it without having a better solution in place is right, and there doesn't seem to be a compelling reason to repeal it, and so I would encourage you not to. And just because I'm paranoid doesn't mean the developers aren't out looking to come get us. Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order. I think this gentleman and maybe Ms. Haynes has a similar idea that somehow we can repeal a section of the code, the county code, without advertisement, and we can't do that. It's just on for discussion later.
Right.
So, there was going to be no determinative action taken tonight at this meeting, other than maybe moving forward with an advertisement, but there would be no repealing ordinance section tonight, if that's what anybody else wants to talk about.
Thank you. Anyone else?
First of all, I would like to add my voice to those thanking Mr. Frazier for his service to the county. 28 years is a heck of a lot of meetings, and all I can say is better you than me, so I'm sorry in that sense that you are leaving, but I bet retirement from this all is going to feel actually really good. So I wish you the very best with your extra free time and add my voice to thank you for all your service. Thank you so much for that. And I do want to also thank the staff, because I see that they've been working hard on the comprehensive revisions to the zoning ordinance that the Berkeley group has been putting forward. I know how much work that also shows, and I haven't had a chance to absorb it as much as maybe some other folks have yet, but I also appreciate the support that the board and the planning commission members seemed to give at their November 19 joint meeting for allowing plenty of opportunity for both boards to absorb the contents of that material and the public as well, and to give lots of opportunity for public comment. So that's very much appreciated. It would be great if, when things are put forward a little more, that if maybe we could do it a couple of chapters at a time possibly, instead of the whole clunk, but I see that the staff is trying to be responsive to that, so thank you for that. I also want to mention that I see on the agenda for tonight is some changes possibly to the family subdivision provisions. I just would encourage you to look at the Virginia Code while you're doing that to make sure of consistency, because we're a little outdated, I think, with some of that, which you've probably already picked up on, but I didn't see that on the agenda. But mostly tonight, I want to speak at least somewhat quickly to the proposal to eliminate Sections 147-38 and 170-38A6 from the ordinance. I think your point is well taken, Mr. Frazier, that I know you're not going to move tonight. You'll have public hearings before you do anything more on that. But there was a determination by, a determination letter, I believe, by our zoning administrator, which again represents, I know, a tremendous amount of work and effort, and that's appreciated. And I recognize, too, there's going to be differences of opinion and complexity, but I do feel that we need to take a little bit more time to look at this and understand it, primarily because this is actually a really important provision for safety on our small back roads. I would have to disagree with the characterization that this is nonsensical. I think that when you have our small back country roads, I could name them dozens, Swineler Hollow, Old Hollow, Gibbrown Hollow, any of those, they're narrow, they're winding, they're twisting, they invariably cross streams, they have hidden driveways that are steep. There needs to be adequate space for fire and rescue vehicles, evacuations in case of a wildfire or some emergency, conflicts among pedestrians. So, those roads are also very pretty, they're quiet, they're iconic parts of our county, they lead to trailheads. So I think requiring a provision that would attempt to make sure that road widths were adequate for these purposes and not allowing large excessive subdivisions is actually quite appropriate. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan. I believe it's consistent with our subdivision zoning ordinances, and at least as far as I can tell, appears to be consistent with the specific authorizations provided in state law. I appreciate the interpretation by the zoning administrator and others, but I think it's extremely narrow, and it's highly unlikely, I think, to reflect the actual intent behind the ordinance, which is, I think, to provide for adequate road width for appropriate development on our back country roads. However, if you feel that the wording doesn't actually accomplish what the intended protections are, then sure, we can revise it, but make sure if we do so that we find a way to protect these same important goals from excessive subdivisions and development on these back roads, because they can't possibly handle massive traffic without major changes. I would also discourage the idea, if anybody's heading that direction, of suggesting that we can't impose protective restrictions that can have the effect of actually limiting the number of lots one can subdivide in a given zoning district. That approach, if taken very far, could indeed nullify most of our zoning and subdivision ordinance, and I don't think that's a requirement under state code, so I hope we don't go that direction. I think also, there was, it was raised that exempting agriculture and conservation parcels from this provision is absurd, I think was the word. I want to point out that this provision does actually say you can't subdivide in less than 28 5-acre parcels unless you have these necessary road widths. So exempting agriculture and conservation is actually consistent with the wording of the provision, but furthermore, I think that's consistent with the intent of the provision, as I said in my letter, which I'll hand out in case you haven't seen it yet, because I apologize for getting it late this afternoon. But if you have a 70-acre parcel back on Swineler Hollow, for example, and that could take two houses under conservation and agricultural zoning, because it's 25 acres. If that were zoned R5, that would result in the potential for 35 houses back there. If it were rezoned to R2, that would be 70 houses, or R1, excuse me, that would be 70 houses. So, the difference between two houses and 70, it justifies a difference between agricultural and residential, potential residential zoning, and I think that's a reasonable distinction. These provisions are important for safety and scenic resources and appear reasonable to achieve those ends. Let's not please shoot ourselves in the foot by throwing out strong ordinances just because we're afraid somebody might possibly sue us on them. If they're reasonable, let's defend them. If they can't be defended, let's find a way to achieve the same important goals in a legally defensible way, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just wanted, could I just ask, just if you want questions? I read your letter, and I was going through our use table and looking at R5 and R2, and you made the point about, and you just reiterated, so I didn't have a chance to ask you about it, but I just wanted to understand your math.
Oh, yeah, don't look at my math too closely. That was never my forte. But I think, I think R2 would be, yeah.
R2 would be 35. R5 would be somewhere around 15, I think.
Yeah, no, don't listen to my laughter, and I shouldn't have repeated that, because I think I caught that earlier. I always said if I'd been good at math, I would have gone to med school, so please don't hold me to that.
Okay, no, all right, that was the only thing I wanted to put in mind.
No, that's a very fair clarification. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, not seeing anyone in the courtroom, I am going to ask the folks on Zoom if anyone wishes to speak for public comment, not about the public hearing. Hold on, I may have someone. Is he wishing to speak?
I'm Levi Atkins, and I'd like to have the money back that I had to spend to protect my property, where the county sold, and they didn't do their homework.
We get your name and district if you said it, I didn't hear it.
Levi Atkins, Jackson.
Thank you.
Please, the board, I think maybe Mr. Curry could, do we have any more information on that that you could shed at this time?
I do not have any information on that that I can shed at this time. I believe what Mr. Atkins is stating, is he told me that he hired a lawyer to assist him with a delinquent taxes situation that, I think, was determined that the parcel was in question or something, and so I think he's asking the county to reimburse him for his legal costs.
I certainly am. My property wasn't in jeopardy. It's a property on the east side of the fence.
I think the county didn't do their.
The county didn't do their homework. The county did do their homework.
I appreciate that, and we could certainly engage the treasurer, who is in charge of that process. But the board, as the board's sitting, I don't think you, I don't know that you're empowered to write a check to us or something like that, but I think you could discuss with the treasurer on the facts of the matter.
I've discussed with the treasurer, no problem. She don't.
Well, the board can discuss with the treasurer and understand the situation. I don't know the situation completely.
But you're right, you don't know, you don't care. I mean, the way I understand it, and I could be wrong, is that the treasurer had a piece of property that was behind on taxes along to someone else. The law firm, I think it's Han and Athie, they all went before the judge. The judge ordered a tax sale, but it was a wrong property, the wrong tax map number. Mr. Payers, former supervisor, made a deposit on it. He didn't follow through with it because it's not the piece of property he thought he was buying. So Mr. Atkins has hired Mr. Brown to do an extensive title search to show that it was the wrong piece of property that the county tried to auction off. And now he's got a bill trying to protect himself from the county, and that's not proper. We've got to somehow get in the middle of that and get it fixed.
That's generally my understanding of the situation. I would suggest to you to request the treasurer to provide you the background, and then you can discuss with county attorney on what you're able to do, what you can and can't.
I gave that to you a couple of months ago.
The treasurer does not answer to me.
Doesn't answer to me either, and I'm going off the board. We still don't have this thing resolved.
I guess she answers to each of us as a citizen.
The citizen should not have to spend their own private money to protect their property from the county.
I'm not going to argue with that, with you about that. I don't disagree. I don't know the entirety of the situation. I think the board should be informed on what it is, and then can make decisions based on that and what's legal to do.
So is Mr. Goff in on that discussion?
No, he has been.
Okay. Feel like we should follow up because I don't want it to drop off.
I will ask the treasurer to brief the board, and then you can go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go back to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak for public comment, only not the public hearing? Please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. Not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close public comment. All right. We want to take a brief recess. Okay, brief recess.
Terry, your words, your words were prophetic. You're like, it's 95% misery. I'm like, I would try to escape.